What's this list?
It's my directors and all who's here.
So you're taking roles?
Yeah.
Well, you put that in the open session minutes?
Um, I just kind of put it in with my packet or when I, when I add it to the minutes, yeah, I try to list who was present, yeah.
Good enough. Thank you.
Hey, well, she missed a good pie already.
Really?
This is the, in your seat at the B O E table, you should always know that your time is at the bell line.
It's making noise, right?
Yes, it makes noise. Oh, I think you do not disturb. There we go.
All right, everybody lined up. Okay.
I'm gonna get this kid's name. I'd like to say his first name, but not his last name. Should I, what do you think I should say?
Her?
You're probably right. Oh, my gosh, it's way more easy than I thought. I was gonna say, congratulations.
Does the back of my hair look really, does it look mine? Okay.
What's wrong?
I was just making sure, all these people are behind me.
Do you need to adjourn? Are they intended to have?
Yes.
Are they aware of that?
Um, let me make sure she knows. Thank you. Look at it tomorrow. We'll have a minute before we go.
Good evening and welcome to the Monthly Board of Education Meeting for Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools. E C P P S is a progressive public school district committed to reimagining education so that all students are given choices to discover and explore their hopes and dreams. And now to begin the meeting, Board of Education Chairperson Angela Cobb.
Thank you, everyone. It is my pleasure to call to order the October 27th, 2025 Meeting of the Board of Education. At this time, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. Good evening, Ms. Bundy. Can we begin with our roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Angela Cobb?
Here.
Pam Perezza?
Here.
Valerie Boe?
Here.
Angelique Bowlen?
Here.
Tommy Old?
Here.
Sharon Warden?
Present.
Dr. Sheila Williams?
Present.
Cheyenne Barrett?
Here.
Natalie Gallup?
Here.
And Catherine Huttev?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Bundy. Ms. Bowlen, can you read our Ethics Awareness Statement for this evening, please?
It is my duty to remind members of the board that it is your responsibility to avoid all conflict of interest and potential conflict of interest in accordance with Chapter 138 A of North Carolina Statutes. As public servants, it is your duty continually monitor, evaluate, and manage your personal, financial, and professional behavior in such a way as to ensure the absence of conflict or potential conflict. The leading member knows any conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the board. Conflict or potential conflicts duly noted and will be reflected in the minutes accordingly. However, there are known conflicts identified, so let the record reflect that as a matter of conflict.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bowlen. At this time, we need a motion to amend this evening's agenda to add an Item C to new business, the Sheeparney Sewer Repair Quote.
Same move.
We have a motion from Ms. Perezza.
Second.
We have a second from Dr. Williams. Do we have any discussion on this motion? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. We'd like to welcome everyone out this evening. It's always good to see a full house and to see lots and lots of people. And with that in mind, I'm gonna turn our program over now to Dr. Parker for our recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening again, everybody. We're really excited about some incredible recognitions we're gonna bring before the Board this evening, and we're gonna kick it off by asking our Director for our School Nutrition Program, Ms. Tammy Reinhardt, to come forward with some really exciting competitions that our schools are gonna be a part of in collaboration with the county of Pasquotank County. But also, as Tammy's come forward, I wanna thank Tammy and her team for preparing some of the evening refreshments and snacks that she had an opportunity to get hold of today in this month as being Farm to School Awareness, and a lot of work went in this evening to preparing some of the things. So if you didn't get a chance to pick up something from the, from the table, please help yourself before you head out and, and try some of those goodies over there. So Tammy, thank you for all you and team do, and we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. I get so nervous when I get up here, but thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, Board Members, and Dr. Parker, is just a privilege to, to present some of our fresh Farm to School products with you. These are products that we use all the time on our menus. Some of the products that we use, and we collaborate with our, our North Carolina Department of Agriculture. We have one of the few states in the Union that have a program like ours. They pick up the produce from our local farms and bring it to us at no cost for delivery. We purchase the products, but they deliver it at no cost. We also were happy to partner again this year with Working Landscapes, and they broker from small farms all around, and that is it. It's just a privilege because one of, maybe we have, we need 50 cases of collard greens, and each case is, what, ladies, 30 pounds of collard greens? So we need 50 cases for one menu. A tiny little farm doesn't have that much. So this Working Landscapes will go and they'll get this farmer, and this farmer, and this farmer, and this farmer, and they'll collaborate and bring us what we need. So it's a privilege to get to work with great people like this. Some of our Farm to School products, I just wrote down a few. All the ground beef that we, that we use at the school, it comes from either Hickory, Hickory Nut Gap Farms or Brass Town Beef. The fish tonight, that is local from Aiden, the catfish, the catfish farmer. Our rice is from Tidewater Grains in Pamlico County, and it's an heirloom Carolina Gold Rice. The collards, the kale, blueberries, strawberries, apples, sweet potatoes, yellow crook neck squash, zucchini, broccoli, romaine lettuce, radishes, cucumbers, grape tomatoes, slicing tomatoes, watermelon, cantaloupe, cabbage, and that's just a few. We try to, as closely as possible, get our food as local and as fresh as possible for our kids, and then we freeze it. So if we can't get it later, we'll get it now, and we put it in the freezer and take care of it like that. So when you see collard greens, it's, it's usually local. When you see kale, it's always local. We can't buy that anywhere except from the farm down the road. So it is a privilege. I'm so proud of my ladies, and it's just a lot of scratch cooking. They got an award this year for their scratch cooking innovation, but it takes a lot of work to work with the fresh produce, and I appreciate them. I appreciate them so much. We just did N C Crunch, and that was Friday. I think all of our schools participated with N C Crunch, and those were apples from the mountains, and we just took all, we had all kinds of apples. I didn't know what kind we could get. We just took everything that we could get, and we had apples for everybody, and then at noon, everybody crunched in their apples and, and enjoyed a fresh Carolina, North Carolina mountain apple. And that was, that was just in celebration of Farm to School Month. Okay? Next, did you want? Yes, if that's okay. I have a special guest tonight with us, Ms. Colleen, Ms. Colleen Brown McKinley. If she'll come up? There she is. She is, Ms. Colleen is our Grant Coordinator for the county, for Pasquotank County, and we have collaborated, partnered with them in our America 250 Revolutionary Cooking Competition, and Ms. Colleen is going to share with us about it.
Now, let me start out, as you're never supposed to, by apologizing you have me tonight because Visaysha Hill, whose project this is, was unfortunately unable to come. And so I will do my very best for you. I have the slides and the clicker, and we'll just see how it goes. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Distinguished Members of the Board, and Dr. Parker, thank you for this opportunity. A little while ago, the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources created a program that they called A America 250 N C to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, our national birthday, as it were, and they set out, they created a grant program. Better? Okay, sorry. They, they created a grant program that they offered to all the counties to put together a program that celebrated national history, state history, and our county for this special occasion. And so the, the county manager convened a committee of various civic and educational leaders, and they sat down to say, what would be the best thing that would represent our county? And some of the things that kept coming up was foodways, was the way in which Pasquotank is a great source of fish and of game. We love to farm. We love to bring our family, our friends, our neighbors, our community around a table and sit down and eat together. And so we also thought the most important place to focus this particular project was on our children. They are our faith, our hope, our future. And so we came up with a revolution in the kitchen, a historic showdown, which is a cooking competition, and as of now, I believe, we have all the Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools participating, fielding a team. Our idea was that food is one of the most, oh, let me see if I can get this. Wish me luck. Food is one of the most potent ways we preserve and share our heritage. Every family recipe tells a story. Every regional dish connects us to our history. And so the idea is that we would encourage ourselves and our children to participate in this, to explore the ways in which what we cook, what we eat connects us to our ancestors, connects us to our grandparents, our great grandparents, our aunts and uncles, connects us to our family and our community. We're hoping that the students will be excited to participate, and they'll realize through embracing their own culture and the greater culture of our county and our state and our nation, that they're all important and significant parts of the current history of North Carolina. We're hoping that this will give educational benefits in terms of life skills. I skipped over that first one, I'll get back to it. To go into the kitchen, to embrace cooking, to, to see how that is a tremendous art and a tremendous piece of our culture, and then, because we all know, when you get in the kitchen to cook, it's all about measuring, it's all about mathematics, it's all about science, and the way that various foodstuffs and chemicals combine to make what before wasn't particularly tasty into something amazing and astonishing. We're also, we're also interested in cultural competency, in learning how North Carolina culture is based in a number of different cultures, and a, a number of different foodways, a number of different historical precedents, all coming together to create what we are today. And then, of course, it's also about history, and seeing history, hopefully, as not just something that's in an academic class, but also is what we're living right now, that 250 years from now, they're going to be reading about and studying about us. We are North Carolina history happening right now. Right now, I believe we have every Elizabeth City Pasquotank School participating, fielding a team, and each of the teams is mentored and coached by a school chef, and they'll, I, I believe some of them already have gone on a tour of the school kitchen and to see how the food that they consume in the cafeteria every day is prepared, and, and to see that that's not something that's separate from them and not that different, although a little different, yes, from what happens in their kitchens after school when they're, when they or their family are preparing dinner. In addition, there'll be faculty advisors from, from each of the, the schools who will help them, you know, especially if there's a, a bit of the history or the research that they need to, that they need a little bit of extra help on. We've got basically three rounds in the competition. The first round, which will take place sometime this fall, at the discretion of each individual school, will simply be a competition inside the school itself. Even if the school fields a single team, they'll undergo a competition experience, and they'll have judges come and sample the food and observe, so that they get that, that experience. Then in winter, right, after the, after the holiday season, the festive season, the, the, who, hmm, the schools will compete against each other and will come out of that with a couple of division champions. And then later in the spring, a little bit closer toward April and May, again, all of the individual dates will be set by the schools themselves, because you know your calendars, and it would be ridiculous for me to set a, a date and say you have to do it by that date. So you do it when the, the team is teamed to do it, and that will be, right, the third and final round, and coming out of that, we will have, on July 4th, 2026, we'll, as part of the County Celebration of Independence Day, we'll have a tent set up as part of the Downtown Elizabeth City Fireworks Extravaganza, where we'll recognize and we'll celebrate everyone who was part of the contest, the champions, the competitors, everyone who was a part of the contest will be recognized and celebrated for participating in this with us. And then the reason that I'm really here today is to say thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We wouldn't have anything right now without you, Ms. Reinhardt. Thank you so much. Thank you to all the students who are participating. Thank you to schools, and thank you so much, Members of the Board, and Dr. Parker. We're gonna try to make this an amazing experience for everyone involved.
Each, each kitchen manager is the head of a cooking team, and I know that most of the managers were not able to come, but we have some here tonight. If you are, you're here, please, ladies, come up so we can recognize you. And any of the children, are, is, are any of the children competitors here tonight representing? We have Ms. Dolores Brumsey, manager at River Road, and her team. We have Ms. Shirley Williams, manager at P W Moore, and her team. I think that's the only ones tonight. Okay. We're gonna go right over here.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Teri Wilson. I'm here as part of the Talent Development Team, and I'm here to give a little feedback and update about our Professional Learning Event called Ignite, and to recognize some of our Beginning Teachers of the Year. Good evening, Board Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, and Board Members. On Monday, October 6th, we held our annual Professional Learning Event, Ignite 2025, at Northeastern High School. We had 496 attendees made up of E C P P S, E C P P S staff like instructional assistants, teachers, custodians, support staff, and administrators. There were over 100 scheduled sessions for staff to choose from to build expertise or skills, and 14 community partners, including our Board, our Education Foundation, and other community members, took part in the Community Connections Expo and spent time networking and building connections with our staff. Centerra partnered with us and provided the mammogram van. We had, I think, over 25 appointments for the mammogram van, and then our nurses worked with the Health Department to administer flu and COVID vaccines at the event. So we even had some of our community partners that were there also receive their vaccines and able to utilize the mammogram van. I did wanna recognize a few people that always assist, and Ignite would not be possible each year without these people. These are also people that usually work behind the scenes, but do make a huge difference, so they're a little uncomfortable getting recognized, but that's okay, they deserve the recognition anyways. So our first, we'd like to recognize our E C P P S Education Foundation and Ms. Judy Stallings. Thank you. The Education Foundation is always willing to support and help us reach our goals, and they help provide us with the goodie bags for the presenters. Thank you, Ms. Judy. Also, a surprise, Ms. Amy Bundy. I would like to recognize Ms. Bundy. Ms. Bundy helped us with our refreshments and our breakfasts. The coffee was amazing, but we had multiple discussions as a team about us forgetting something, because like she had taken over so much and done a lot of stuff off of our plate, we thought we were actually forgetting to do stuff because we were just used to having to do it all, and Ms. Amy just. Other group that I want to recognize is really a family. They're not here today because they are probably still at school. It's the Northeastern Custodial Team. This team not only helps with Ignite, but we use Northeastern's building a lot for convocation and other district events, so they're always getting the building prepared, down to every last detail, and always jumping in to make sure things run smoothly the day of the event. So I do still want to call their names, even though they weren't able to be here. We have Alandis Williams, the head custodian, Mr. Joe Lewis, Sharon Fagans, Nancy Wilson, Terrence Harris, Danny Walker, and Avoya Boykin. So thank you to them. Okay, now I'm switching over to Beginning Teachers. So the Beginning Teachers of the Year is a little different than Teacher of the Year process, which happens in the spring. The Beginning Teacher of the Year selection process is sponsored by N C A T, and it's developed to recognize the unique challenges and achievements that new teachers experience during their first year in the classroom. So these teachers are teachers that have finished their first year in the district, and they're currently in their second year at the same school or in the same district. I will recognize the school winners, and then I'll recognize the finalists and our district winner as well. So from Central Elementary, we have Ms. Michelle Howard. From P W Moore, we have Kyra Smith. From Sheeparney Pre-K, we have Ms. Jamie Curles. From River Road Middle School, we have Shakila Williams. From Elizabeth City Middle School, Kajana Harris. From Northeastern High School, J Tiana McMurren. One of our finalists is from J C Sawyer, Ms. Holly Brown. Another finalist from Weeks for Elementary, Ms. Janice Rogerson. And our district winner, who's moving on to the N C A T Regional Selection Process, is not able to be here because of a soccer game, is Mr. Seth Moore from Pasquotank County High School. Help me in giving these Beginning Teachers another round of applause. Help me in giving these beginning teachers another round of applause.
Board Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, and board members, I would like to take this time to recognize Sarah Byram. Sarah is the River City Teacher Cadet Facilitator and has worked to help build and enhance the program as she makes adjustments as needed for the success of all of our students. She helps the cadets explore the teaching profession by providing them with hands-on learning opportunities, learning about colleges and careers, and organizing trips to colleges and universities that allow cadets to gain the experience needed to make an informed decision about their future. As Sarah comes up to be recognized for her hard work... Sarah would like, also like to give you a little bit of information about the program and the wonderful cadets.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm really excited to be here. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Sarah Byram. I am a product of ECPPS. So I went to Sheeparney, UC Middle, well, UC Junior High, UC Middle, and Northeastern. And I'm a Northeast, I mean, a North Carolina Teaching Fellow. So I'm really excited to be back and to have this opportunity. When it was presented, I'm overwhelmed. Starting any program from scratch is hard. Last year, we had three students. I'm proud to say one is enrolled at Elizabeth City State with the full intent to come back to ECPPS and teach. And one, who last year was not going to be a teacher, just emailed me today to be her Teaching Fellow recommender because she would like to come back and teach as well. So I'm really excited about that. So this year, I'm blessed with 12 wonderful students, and Jamia would like me to say beautiful students, from both traditional high schools. And we've done a lot of exciting things. We start by digging into the teacher evaluation instrument and talking about what makes a good teacher. And we spend most of the first nine weeks gathering that information. And this year, we did a book study, and that's what we're showing with you. We read Teach Like a Pirate. Well, just the first part. And they read about the qualities that that author believes makes a good teacher. And then I asked them to divide in groups by their schools, so Pasquotank and Northeastern, and create their own posters. So we have Teach Like an Eagle and Teach Like a Panther. So we have Teach Like an Eagle is enthusiastic, adaptable, grounded, learner-centered, and empathetic. Panther, we have patient, analytical, noble, trustworthy, humorous, empathetic, and radiant. And our second, empathetic, ambitious, generous, loving, and enthusiastic. So I was really excited about this and to share it with you. And we are getting ready to dig into the development of the learner and start our visits to the pre-K programs and the elementary programs and the middle schools. Next week, we're heading to UNC Charlotte and NCANT, and the week after that, East Carolina. So we are busy and we're really excited for this opportunity. So I would love just to recognize your teacher cadets. Full transparency, not all are sure they want to be teachers yet, but that's what this program is about. Some would like to go into other fields that do involve education, like occupational therapy or nursing, but working in schools. So that's what this program is about. So first, from Pasquotank County High School, we have Ms. Cheyenne Barrett. From Northeastern, we have Ms. Catherine Hutto. Right, from Northeastern, Ms. Zanaria Whitehurst. Also from Northeastern, Ms. Lenissa Jones. From Pasquotank, we have Ms. Constance Bonilla. Northeastern, we have Ms. Jamia Idlet. From Pasquotank, we have Ms. Raylee Balance. From Northeastern, we have Ms. Kaylee Burgard. From Northeastern, we have Ms. Esperanza Periga. Also from Northeastern, Ms. Tiana Simpson. Ms. Emma Mullins. And Ms. Gabriela Fergus Vasquez.
Good evening. Board Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, I mean Brain for all, Superintendent, and our board members. My name is DeeDee Moore. I'm the proud principal at Pasquotank County High School. I am here to recognize two employees. On October the 10th and 11th, we celebrated Pasquotank County High School's 25th year of existence. During this weekend, we invited all of our principals that have served in Pasquotank since 2000. So Ms. Patty Hamler came back and celebrated with us, and we had a phenomenal time. But this weekend couldn't have happened without two amazing employees. They say write the vision and make it plain. I just write the vision and they make it plain. So I am here to present two of our charter members who have been at Pasquotank County High School since the bricks were laid. And without them, I am nothing. And so I want to definitely appreciate both of them. If you had the opportunity to attend, it was a moment where you sat back and said, wow. And because of them, it was so successful. We also purchased gifts for the entire board. So if you were not able to attend, we do have some gifts here for you. And thank you for the donation that you all made. And so at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Patricia Townsend.
Is that a door or was that me? I'm not sure which one. Good evening, everybody. Let me introduce myself. My name is Heather Edmiston. I'm the Director of Technology for Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools. Tonight, I would like to let you know about a great program that we had this summer through the Governor's Business Committee. The Technology Department received an award of $13,500, which we put towards supplies, wages, and tech tools for an internship program. This was our second year for doing this. Our interns worked with us for eight weeks. It was their first full-time job for most of them. They worked on different devices from Chromebooks to printers to copiers and prepping for students to return from over the summer. They set up new printers, they set up new phones, they learned about customer service, they learned about running a help desk, and all the different components of operating a tech department. This was an excellent first job and a real-life experience. Yes, they came to work every morning early and they stayed until late in the afternoon. So they know what it's like to work. We are now working to further their experiences in their schools and allow them to actually run student help desk. That's our next phase. All members of the tech department assisted the interns throughout and served as wonderful mentors. Without these people, this tech department could not run, and this program would have never gotten off the ground. One is Wendy Lawson. Amy Self. Thaddeus Ellis. Cheryl Ramsdale, who's sitting in the back. And Paul Wondell, who could not join us tonight. They were amazing mentors for these interns and shared all of their vast knowledge and experience with each and every one. We absolutely loved having them as part of our department this year. Without further ado, please let me introduce our Technology Department interns. Darius Ury. Mo Outlaw. And Ray Christie, who is not able to be here tonight. Thank you so much, and thank you for supporting the Technology Department of ECPPS. We love having these students with us this summer, and we look forward to figuring out how to get them back in there again.
Good evening, everyone. I am Jonathan Sneed. I am the proud principal of the Sheeparney Elementary School located up the street at 200 West Elizabeth Street. And it's my honor to share a few recognitions from Sheeparney Elementary School this evening. Each of these groups represents the spirit of excellence, resilience, and teamwork that defines our school community. Our first group is our Food and Nutrition Staff of Sheeparney Elementary. The word resilient perfectly describes this team. Despite working under less than ideal conditions due to building repairs, they have ensured that every student receives breakfast, lunch, and for some students, even supper each day. And they always do it with a smile and a spirit of excellence. I don't believe any of our ladies are here tonight, but I do want to call their names. Our Cafeteria Manager, Ms. Yolanda Banks, Ms. Lynette Bo, Ms. Tress Dillard, Ms. Ebony Graham, and Ms. Linda Dance. Next, I would like to recognize our multi-classroom leaders or our MCLs. This exceptional group of two ladies has extended the reach of our administrative team by providing high-quality coaching and instructional support to our teachers. Their leadership has already resulted in stronger planning, deeper data analysis, and more intentional teaching that is moving us to the next level. So I want to recognize Ms. Teeny Riddick. And last, but certainly not least, please join me in recognizing our Eagles of the Month. For the month of September, these outstanding students were selected by their teachers for exemplifying respect and kindness, which was our focus traits for the month. As the first group of honorees for the school year, they've set the standard for what it means to soar as Sheeparney Eagles. And so those students are Everly Raby. Declan Schaefer. Zion Jones. Navea Lamb. Lyric Lister. Angel Palma. And Nia Ya Bell.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dani Morris White. I am the coordinator of the pre-K program, also located at Sheeparney Elementary School. And I am here to recognize some very special people tonight that make our pre-K program sparkle and shine. I'm gonna start with our pre-K Teacher of the Year 2526, Ms. Holly Cartwright. Ms. Cartwright is one of our fantastic pre-K teachers. She always leads with love and compassion for her students. Ms. Madison Spencer, our pre-K Employee of the Year 2526. If you don't know anything about Ms. Spencer, Ms. Spencer was thrust into a teaching role last last year, and she did a phenomenal job. Absolutely, she earned that Employee of the Year. And Ms. Spencer, we're trying to get her to actually go back and be a teacher. We would love for her to step up. I'm working on her, but she is phenomenal. And then we have our Beginning Teacher of the Year for Pre-K, Ms. Jamie Curles. Ms. Curles is our EC Pre-K teacher. She teaches our four-year-old self-contained class. And I have to tell you, if there's anyone that has patience, it is this woman right here. She has the patience of a saint, and she is phenomenal. So let's give it up for our Teachers of the Year for the Pre-K Program. So one of the things that we have started in our Pre-K Program is we have four major committees. Each committee meets bi-monthly and helps us to plan and implement really important events and activities for our students to engage in. We have an academic committee. We have a social committee to make sure that we keep the morale of our teachers up. We have a student engagement committee. And then we also have a family support and engagement committee. So the family and support and engagement committee's purpose is to make sure that we are getting the message out to our families and the community as a whole about what Pre-K is about and things that we're doing in our schools. They maintain our Facebook page, they send out communication. But one thing that they did that is, they do that was absolutely amazing right now, is they planned our video that you will be able to see shortly. The committee came together, they decided, you know, what is it that we want to tell the community about Pre-K? And they came up with the idea and got it all together, and the script, and everything that they wanted to share with everyone. So I want to recognize this committee for working so hard on that project, but also all of the projects that they do throughout the year. So I'm going to call their names, and if they are here, would you please come up and receive your certificate? Ariel Selmaier, Crystal Chavis, Kim Holloway, Donna Jones, And that is our Family Support and Engagement Committee. Give it up for our committee. So while our committee was planning for our video that we're going to show in a few minutes, they wanted to make sure that we highlighted students that were exceptional in our program. And so we have three students that we're recognizing tonight that you will get to see in our video in just a few moments. And these students, four years old, were able to practice and remember their lines and talk about the Pre-K program and what it is that they like about Pre-K. And so we wanted to recognize them tonight. So we have Archer Smith, Sophia Molina, Yes, go and take a picture. As Ms. Kinsel would say, many hands make light work, and that is a testament to the way that the Pre-K Program operates. We all work together, the children, the staff, the families alike. And I just want to thank everyone that is affiliated with the Pre-K Program. Thank you so much for everything that you do.
This year, our initiative with Participate Learning is to produce students who are more global citizens. Take a look around our school, at some of the things that are going on.
This year, our school has started an exciting journey, global journey, with Participate Learning, where each month, we will explore a new theme to help our students stay connected to the world around them. In September, we focused on self-awareness through the book, The Dot, where we focus on activities incorporated into classrooms that celebrated what makes each child unique. Currently, we're celebrating communications competency through Hispanic Heritage Month, where each classroom has a designated country that they've selected to incorporate learning into their classrooms, where students can learn about cultures, traditions, foods, and they intertwine that through math and literacy and art as well.
So global learning, being a part of the global environment, learning about other cultures, learning about their food, learning about, just talking about diversity, all right? So it's very good to engage our students, for them to be learning about other countries.
For first grade, our standard was ask-and-answer questions about nonfiction text. So we studied Cuba, and we read books about Cuba, we watched videos about Cuba, and I asked the students the questions, and they're able to retell me the information. So it's important for our students to learn about the whole world, not just right here in Elizabeth City at Sheep Harney Elementary.
I think it's really cool because we get to learn about different types of cultures and what they do.
It's points and other stuff, so if you travel to Puerto Rico, maybe you can already know some of their foods and other things.
Even in our DLI classes, those students are also learning a global perspective as they explore the language of Spanish and all it has to offer.
So I am our school's global lead. We also have a global committee, and so we sit together and we look at the monthly themes, we share resources with staff, and then we share ideas of what they can do each month and each week to intertwine that into their lesson, to broaden what's happening outside of Elizabeth City, what's outside of our community, and what do we do that impacts
Pre-K is where learning begins.
Hello and welcome to Pre-K, where learning begins with joy, care, and a strong foundation for future success. We're so excited to partner with our families during this important early year of learning. At Sheep Harney, we believe Pre-K is more than just preparation for kindergarten. It's a time when children grow, explore, and build the social, emotional, and academic skills they'll carry with them for years to come.
This is my 27th year with the Pre-K Program. Pre-K's aim is to take four-year-old children, and some of these children have just turned four when they come to Pre-K, and help them to become self-confident, socially and emotionally stable, so they can go on to become successful kindergarteners.
In these early years, social-emotional development is just as important as academics. Our play-based approach helps children build confidence, empathy, and communication skills, all while discovering the joy of learning.
I like to play with my friends.
I learned about writing my name, and I learned about the letter P, and I know cutting.
In our classrooms, students engage in whole-group instruction, where they focus on key foundational skills and concepts like numbers, letters, colors, and shapes, all in a fun and developmentally appropriate way.
My favorite is school circle time.
Throughout the day, students also participate in learning centers, where they explore hands-on activities and learn through play. Whether they're building with blocks, creating art, or pretending in the kitchen area, children are developing critical thinking, cooperation, and problem-solving skills. We also provide teacher-led small-group instruction, which allows us to focus on each child's individual needs. These small-group times help us tailor learning experiences that support every child's growth and development. An important part of our literacy instruction includes Haggerty, a phonemic awareness program that uses movement and rhythm to help students understand the sounds and words. Through this engaging kinesthetic approach, children build a strong foundation for reading by connecting sounds to letters in a way that makes learning more memorable and fun.
We like to include families in our learning. We do that by sending projects home with the children that they can do with their families. We also have events and activities at school, where parents can come in and do learning activities with their children and see just how much fun learning can be.
At Sheep Harney Pre-K, we're not just teaching, we're building relationships, fostering early learning, and helping every child thrive.
Pre-K is where the love of learning begins.
At this time, we are going to take a very short recess, for those of you who need to scoot out for dinner or other things. Just a couple-minute recess, and then we'll be right back in. Thank you for coming out this evening. If you are leaving, if you want to stay, we'd love to have you, but we totally understand that supper time calls. Oh, and don't forget, on your way out, there's some food over here on this table, if you We are ready to resume our meeting at this time. Next on our agenda is the public comments section of our board meeting. And just a reminder that the public comments section is governed by Policy Code 2310. Just to share a few of those insights from that policy, each month, the first part of at least one regularly-scheduled board meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. The following directions for participation apply. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comment. The public comment session will not exceed 30 minutes of the total, except by majority vote of the board. A sign-up sheet will be available 30 minutes before the meeting begins for an individual to indicate their desire to address the board. During the public comment period, the board chairperson will recognize speakers in the order in which they signed in. When the person's name is called, please approach the podium without anything in hand except paper or index cards if needed. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with additional information in written form. The chairperson will preside over the public comment period. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board, except to request clarifications of points made by the presenter. The speaker will be made aware when his or her three minutes is up, and at that time, the speaker must leave the podium without comment, and either return to his or her seat or leave the meeting. Tonight, we have two people who have signed up for public comment. The first on our list is Mr. Tony Sawyer. Mr. Sawyer, you may approach the podium. Ms. Bundy will act as timekeeper. She will let you know when to begin and when to end.
Okay, thank you. I think most of you have a piece of paper in front of your nameplate. I did that to save some time. And Ms. Cobb actually has a copy of my most recent criminal background report, the same as Ms. Rachel Haynes received. That copy I gave her actually has Rachel's name on it. I'm gonna start from the bottom. This is a letter that Dr. Parker has said, the reason why I can't volunteer. You were escorted out of a Board of Education meeting for disruptive behavior. That, people, is a lie. What happened is, I was in the middle of my last paragraph, and I decided I'm gonna finish it. So Board Chair, Warden at the time, gestured for a deputy to escort me away from the podium, not out of the building. I had the right to sit down or leave, and I just decided to leave, as I always do. Now I'm gonna go to number one. I cannot ignore, well, I know about your past convictions or crimes, compatible with working with children. Well, first of all, I've worked at the YMCA, the Boys Club, Boy Scouts of America, Parks and Rec, never came up. Another thing, and this is the big thing, in this number-one part, Dr. Parker is actually violating state law. It's a misdemeanor now, because he's done it three years in a row. I had my record expunged four years ago. It's illegal in the state of North Carolina to bring up somebody's past after it's been expunged. That is the whole purpose of getting your record expunged. It is illegal to throw it in my face, and he's done it four years, I mean, three years in a row, okay? You previously attempted to bribe a school official. That is a lie. I have never been found guilty or even charged with bribery. That is another lie. Now, all of these are punishable by a fine and even some jail time. Now we're gonna get to the serious one. I have a history of harassing and disruptive behavior. That is also a lie, and it's a violation of my First Amendment freedom of speech. As long as I get up here and don't curse anyone or threaten anybody, I can say whatever I want to. I want to quote Chuck Schumer, Democrat Senate Majority Leader. Remember, you're free to speak your mind, unless your mind contains something they don't like. That sounds a lot like our president. And the bad part is, our superintendent sounds just like him right now. As you can see, now, one more thing, the harassment of disruptive behavior, since he's considered a government official, that's also a felony now. He could actually go to prison, not jail, and a fine as well. Tonight, I'm asking at this board, teach these three young ladies tonight something they can't learn in the classroom. And that is, you can despise somebody as much as some of you despise me, but at the same time, be fair. You can't learn that in the classroom, ladies. Tonight, I ask at this board, by this letter, and this letter only. Um, tonight, I ask that this board, by this letter, and this letter only, to do the right thing.
Go ahead, that's your time.
Put me back on that field Friday night.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Next on our list this evening, we have Elizabeth Shaken. Ms. Shaken, you may approach the podium. Ms. Bundy will again be your timekeeper, and she'll let you know when you can begin and when you can end.
I would be remiss if I did not share my mother's story. I am the youngest of five children. My oldest brother and I are fifteen years apart. My mother had reared her children in low income, sometimes impoverished circumstances. After I was born into my family, my mom chose to return back to full-time employment to help provide for the basic necessities of life. She received an entry-level healthcare administration position. During my youth, I remember my mother reading books about exceptional leaders. She would take the time to share their stories with me. It was during this time in our family life that my mother chose to become career-minded. She returned back to school to finish her bachelor's degree. While in school, she was recruited for a leadership healthcare administration position that took our family to the suburbs of DC. She graduated with her bachelor's degree at fifty-nine years old. I am privileged to be a witness of my mother being an exceptional leader in her field of work and in her home. She is seventy-three years old, and with her five children, my parents have fifteen grandchildren, and this does not include the countless foster children one of my brothers has provided a home for over the past decade. My oldest niece just got married, so I expect a great-grandbaby or two before my mom is eighty. The entry-level position my mother received almost thirty years ago did not require a degree. Today, that same position does require a bachelor's degree. The information I present to you tonight includes a PowerPoint from the CEO of NEET. When Dr. Andrew Harris presented, he stated that for every one open slot, they have four to five applicants. This presentation may give the Board of Education some insight into what parents are looking for in our public schools. In addition to this information, I present to you Leader in Me, an education model that inspires exceptional leaders at every level and what the results are when creating a high-trust, inclusive school environment. To quote Dr. Keith Parker, "I firmly believe that the purpose of education is to equip our students with the skills, knowledge, and opportunities that they need to live fulfilling, choice-driven lives." To do this, we must collaborate creatively and think boldly about how we can transform our schools to meet the needs of the twenty-first-century learner. High educational outcomes for all students are not just a goal, they are a necessity." End quote. To this, I add, amen.
Thank you, Ms. Shaken. And now, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I do want to start by, again, thanking Ms. Ryan Hart and the Child Nutrition Department for all the work they've done. They also provided this evening, um, some sampling of their menu for the Board of Education, which was a highlight of the farm-fresh produce that is there. And I also just want to take this moment just to emphasize the significant contributions that our school cafeteria workers make to the lives of our children, and also how fundamentally important, um, federal programming is to support and sustain programs like this. Uh, and we are certainly not exempt from the benefits of federal funding for programs like that. So, I just want to make that point here. And also, again, Tammy, thank you for all that you and team have done to highlight farm to fresh. So, if your child goes to one of our schools, I would invite them to eat a lunch if they don't normally do that, and to try out some of these vegetables that are coming fresh from North Carolina farms. Um, I think that's a wonderful thing. Um, I also want to echo some of the things that were said earlier. You know, we had some really solid recognitions tonight that speak for themselves. But I do want to make a point, a couple of points. One is, our Teacher Cadet Program is one of the most robust and engaging Teacher Cadet Programs that I've seen. Um, and so, I want to thank Ms. Cow and Ms. Byram for all that they're doing. You know, we've said oftentimes that really all that we need is already here in Elizabeth City. And so, giving our young people an opportunity to, in their junior and senior year, start thinking about, maybe they might want an education career. And that's what the Teacher Cadet Program is doing. And you heard some of what Sarah was saying, some of these experiences that our young people want to have. So, I want to, um, just share how joyful it is to see our young people come and to be recognized on that regard. And then, the final point here is, I'm really proud of the growth that our Ignite Conference has made over the past three years. As you heard Ms. Wilson talk about, we've really increased the number of participants. I mean, we're kind of moving into it being now a regional conference, and some of our neighbors have expressed some interest in being able to attend. But pushing five hundred attendees and being able to offer some of the really engaging sessions that we've been able to offer, I think speaks to the hard work that the team is doing. Um, and the partnership with Centerra in particular to provide wellness and vitality opportunities for our staff to be able to access there, I think is a really great thing. Um, so, on the spirit of brevity, considering that today was an early release day, um, and I'm going to echo the spirit of getting out early with my comments and end there with the spirit of thanking everybody for all that they do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. And now, we will move to Vice Chair Perezza and our Student Board Member Reports.
Thank you, Chair Cobb. We're gonna start our Student Board Member Reports tonight with Katherine Hutto from Northeastern High School.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I'll try to keep this short because it is getting late, but we do have a lot going on at Northeastern in October. So, first of all, we won our homecoming game forty-seven to six. Give it up for us. Um, and in cross-country, we want to give a big shout-out to freshman Kawika Corray. Sorry if I mispronounced that. He earned a spot in the 3A State Championship, and will be going to Kernersville this Friday. The boys' football team also defeated Martin County fourteen to thirteen, and will travel to Pasquotank this Friday. Volleyball has just finished their season, and we also, at the Title I event, had a student versus teachers volleyball game. Unfortunately, the teachers won. In band news, they recently went to a competition, and get ready for this. First place overall, first-place drum majors, first-place color guard, second-place percussion, first-place music performance, first-place visual effects, and first-place marching. In field trips, our aviation academy took a trip to the U.S. Coast Guard Base, where they said they learned a lot about opportunities they had no idea existed. And in academics, today, we just celebrated seven teachers who met growth and six teachers who exceeded growth for the twenty-four to twenty-five school year. They celebrated with a cake and blue and green balloons. Lastly, we had our homecoming dance with a great turnout. And we've also had two Spirit Weeks hosted by SGA and one hosted by the Guidance Counselors for our College App Week last week. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Natalie Gallup, the Student School Board Representative for the Early College. And we've officially reached the halfway point of the semester, and the first nine weeks have really flown by. We seniors enjoyed our breakfast sponsored by the PTO and celebrated College Week last week. Many seniors have begun receiving college acceptances and completing their Common App. This week, we're recognizing Red Ribbon Week with an information session focused on drug and alcohol prevention. Our tenth graders recently took the pre-ACT and learned about the NC Global Scholars Program, while our freshmen have settled in and are working hard. We're also excited about COA's partnership with ECSU, MacU, NC State, and NC State, which will open even more opportunities for us students. Our SGA is collecting candy for the ECPD trunk-retreat event this Friday and is starting plans for our Christmas parade float, which all students are invited to join. In addition, our National Honor Society has recently completed a group trash sweep downtown to help keep our community clean. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and I look forward to the second half of the semester.
Good evening, everyone. I am Cheyenne Barrett, and I am the ECPPS Board Member for Pasquotank County High School. In the month of October, my school has been quite busy from sports, clubs, homecoming, and even senior events. So, let me give you a bit of an insight of all the fun, hard-working things me and my school have been up to. As far as sports, our volleyball team has just wrapped up their season with a pink-out-themed senior night. Shout-out to all the seniors in honor of their last high school volleyball game. As far as football, soccer, and cross-country, they will all be wrapping up their seasons this week as our men's soccer team will have their last match against Northeastern Wednesday, October twenty-ninth. Our football team will have their spooky rivalry game against Northeastern High School, which will be October thirty-first at Pasquotank County High School, starting at seven. I suggest getting there early to see our seniors walk across the field on their special night. And our cross-country team will be busy at their state tournament on Halloween as well. Lastly, for sports, if you are interested in any winter sports, make sure you have an updated physical form and check with Coach Mail to ensure that you are eligible for winter sports. Moving on to our clubs, PTANK has just announced our 2025-2026 Senior Council Members. Seniors, stay tuned for those Panthers on the prowl as we will be announcing senior events and some basketball fun soon. PCHS DECA Program previously had their annual Toys and Treats Night along with their Krispy Kreme fundraiser. As they prep for the DECA Regionals competition and the DECA Officer Power Trip, we have been fundraising all month, and if you are still interested in donating, our deadline will be October thirty-first. And last but not least, for our seniors, we have been busy all month preparing for life after high school. As we have just came out of Free Application Week, seniors have been working on FASFA, College Connect, and everything else we need to be successful in college. Lastly, today was the last day to turn in work for report cards that will be coming out very soon. And in honor of our kids that managed to maintain over a C average, no ISS, no out-of-school suspension, and no more than five unexcused absences all semester, we will be hosting a spooky Halloween PBIS celebration, celebrating the hard work students have paid off all semester with games, food, music, and more. Thank you.
Thank you to Vice Chair Perezza and to our Student Board Members. Uh, next on our agenda is, we need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as Presented.
I move to, um, accept the Consent Agenda as Presented.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
I'll second.
Did you? Okay. And Ms. Perez, I think, seconded it first before we could get that down. I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. That is unanimous. Now, we are going to move on to our new business this evening. The first item of, um, business on our new business is school improvement plans, and we'll ask Kelly Cowell if she will step forward and speak on that with us.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair Perezza, and Board Members. I am before you to present the 2025-2026 School Improvement Plans. There we go. Hold on. Go back. Each school has a school improvement team that collaboratively creates their school improvement plan to improve student performance. While the general statute requires board action at least every two years, ECPPS traditionally presents revised plans to the board for review and annual approval. Each school's improvement plan has been provided to the board through a link in the agenda which was shared with you last week. Okay, so, for supports in our progress. We are empowering and supporting teachers and teacher leaders through the implementation of MCLs in our schools, our directors, and the district instructional support team. We also have a focus on school-level data by triangulating test performance, attendance, and school discipline data. This analysis helps us identify and address issues, particularly those identified as low-performing schools. So, our district trends. The improvement goal trends across our schools focus on achieving academic growth by implementing data-driven instruction and professional development, while also engaging family and communities and fostering positive student development and school climate. Those efforts are centered on increasing proficiency, which leads to higher school performance grades, and include continuous learning for staff and support for student success across all areas. I'm trying, y'all. So, our next steps. Our next steps include monitoring progress on current action items and action steps, using data collaboratively to improve teaching, strengthening family and school partnerships, and continuing restorative practices to foster a safe learning environment. So, tonight, we ask the board to take action on approval of the school improvement plans for the 2025-2026 school year.
Okay, so, at this time, we need a motion to approve the school improvement plans as presented.
I make a motion to approve the school improvement plans as presented.
Will it second?
I second.
Any questions by the board regarding school improvement plans? Okay, if not, please show a positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Cowell.
Thank you.
Next up, we're going to ask Ms. Kinsel if she will report with, um, to us on Policy 3420.
Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening regarding Policy 3420. Um, the policy itself is actually a very broad policy that encompasses several aspects of student promotion and accountability. And, but tonight, we're going to focus on just one aspect of the policy that is up for change. Um, this is just a comprehensive list of all of the areas within the policy. And again, the one area we're going to be focusing on where change is occurring is the opportunities to earn credit. Um, for this particular part of the policy, um, it's important that we talk about two distinctions here. Uh, we're going to focus on credit recovery as the State Board has made changes in how districts are to handle credit recovery as it relates to student transcripts in high school. But this policy also discusses and handles how repeating a course for credit that was already earned is also happening. So, there's two very strong distinctions here. Credit recovery is a course that was taken, and for whatever reason, it was incompleted, or it was failed. Uh, and it's an opportunity to be able to take no credit for a course and be able to then recover by retaking portions of a course that would help them become proficient after taking it. Uh, currently, what's happening now is it is a pass/fail. Uh, but the changes that are within the policy address that. The repeating a course for a credit that's already earned is an opportunity for students to be able to request to take the course over again, having a minimum of a C. They must have at least a C in the course to be able to request it. And it's an opportunity for them to take the course to deepen their knowledge, be able to show maybe better proficiency with the course content. And, um, it might be something that they need to pursue their post-secondary goals to receive a higher grade. And what happens with that is it's an actual, like, a grade replacement of the previous course that was taken. So, it can be tricky because they might perform less than they did the first time. So, it is an option, and they have to be careful when requesting that. So, some key changes within the policy regarding credit recovery is that it addresses only the courses that are required for graduation. And it's no longer going to be a pass or fail. The new grade will- The new grade will reflect both the pre-existing failed grade and a combination that is proportional to the first attempt and the second attempt. And that's language that's in the state board policy, has to be proportional. And that the grade earned, they have to be combined in some way to reflect a new grade that will then become part of the transcript and completely replace the first attempt, and it'll appear one time with one grade. Okay? Sounds complicated, but it really isn't. Okay. Within the implementation, we're going to present to you a copy of the regulations that the superintendent will approve, and regulations that help to define the procedures for implementation are at the superintendent's discretion. But as a sneak peek to help you understand how we're going to address this, we're going to start with the eligibility for credit recovery. Because we're now forming a new grade and we're combining the first attempt with the second attempt, it's important to understand that it becomes impossible to recover if you are so far below in your failing grade that even if you were to get, you know, a very high average through the credit recovery course, that it would be almost impossible to be able to pass once they're combined and averaged. So when we do the math, a student must have at least a 55 in the failure of the first attempt. And so after that, otherwise, if they have something less than 55, and it makes sense to me, and I think it made sense to most of the principals when we talked through this, having a 55, if you're below 55%, you probably do need to take the whole course over again. So that's going to help us with defining where eligibility lies with reading recovery, not reading recovery, but our credit recovery versus repeating the course. The pre-testing for the credit recovery will be part of the procedures to be able to find which units or modules within the credit recovery course, which right now is offered online through a platform called Edgenuity. And it gives us the opportunity to be able to pre-test each module. And so if they pass that, then they'll log the grade for that particular thing, passing with at least a 70, and they'll log that grade, but be able to move on without having to complete the assignments because they would have proven that they understand the content within that module. So they have to receive the 70% to test out, otherwise, they're going to have to complete that whole module. Okay? So in addition to that, we're looking at averaging a 70 across all of the modules that they have. If you have a 70 and you combine it with a failing grade of 55 as the bottom, that new grade, when combined and averaged together, then they're going to have at least a 62.5%, which becomes a passing grade, which will then be part of their transcript, and it will be included as part of their GPA calculation. So we want to be careful that we're not making an advantageous kind of situation for students so they can gain the system, because this is truly meant to be an attempt or an opportunity to be able to recover credits that have been lost because of not being able to demonstrate proficiency the first time around. And again, to remind you, this only applies to courses that are required for graduation. Any other electives that students may want to retake to be able to recover the elective credits needed for graduation, an elective course can be taken over again, but it will remain at a pass/fail. So with all of that being said... Get mine. Tonight is a first-read-only, and so with that, there's no action that's required by the board. But if you have questions between now and the next month when this is presented for adoption, then please reach out, or we can try to answer them this evening. But I'll be very transparent and say if I don't know the answer, I'd like the time to be able to research it and get it to you. So I will leave you with that. If you have any questions now, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Is there a question by anyone? I only have one, and it's not really a question, it's, I guess, more of just a thought. Probably needs to be some thought given as to how we are going to present, should this pass through, the information to the parents of the students, because a lot of parents may be ingrained with the thought that if their student gets a 60, then they're through. And with this being a 70 to move on through modules and to be... I think maybe there needs to be some thought process into how they're going to be able to explain the difference between you have to have this in this platform and in this scenario versus a 61 would get you through if you were in the classroom. I just think that might be a point of confusion for some people.
And it could very well be. When we discussed this with the counselors and with the principals at the secondary level, we presented like three options to say, okay, we can calculate it this way, and we can calculate it this way. And one particular option really got in the weeds as far as, you know, making sure everything was proportional. And we tried to be able to talk through something that was going to be easy to understand and implement. So to your point, Chairman Cobb, that is certainly something that we will address. We certainly know who our kids are that are taking credit recovery right now, so we can do targeted communications with them. But we also want to include this information in our guides for, you know, getting the information out about course selections and grading and all of that good stuff at the secondary level to make sure that it's clearly represented.
Okay, thank you. I just put myself in the shoes of a parent who sees their student got a 63 on credit recovery, and they are very excited because they think they passed it. And so, you know, just front-loading that ahead of time, I think, would be...
And that's the biggest change.
Yeah. Okay, other questions from any members of the board? Thank you.
No, thank you.
And then, next up, we're going to ask Ms. Jordan to join us and talk about Sheeparney, which was the newly added addition this evening on our agenda.
Good evening, Chairman Cobb, Vice Chair Parezza, Board Members, Dr. Parker. Today, we have asked for a budget approval. We're seeking a budget approval to do some plumbing repairs at Sheeparney Elementary School. It coincided with them presenting and being honored this evening during the board. So what we're asking for is approval to do some plumbing repairs that will greatly impact the cafeteria. Recently, we've been having to work with our food nutrition department to bring in the meals from me and prepare to other schools until we can get these repairs funded and get the repair completed. So this evening, that's why we're asking for or seeking approval to get these funds available to perform and complete these repairs. Cake Services is providing us with plumbing augmentation because we don't have a plumber on staff, and they've been working with us to get started. But we would need additional funding to complete those repairs and get the cafeteria back online.
Okay. So at this time, we need a motion to accept the proposal for the Sheeparney sewer line repair?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion from Ms. Warden, a second from Vice Chair Parezza. Questions? Any questions by any members of the board? Okay, if not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect, Mr. Old was absent for that vote. Okay, thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you.
All right, and finally, this evening, we are at the time for adjournment and need a motion to adjourn. Okay, we've got a motion from Ms. Bowlen. Do we have a second? Ms. Bogues has a second there. Any questions? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. We are adjourned.